We'll call this meeting of Lima City Council to order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Councilor Gordon, followed by the pledge of allegiance. And we have two students from Bath High School here this evening, Tyler Chauvy and Jacob Clark. And I'm gonna call on you gentlemen to start us off with the pledge of allegiance after the invocation.
Lord in heaven, I ask you to help bring us all together, to bring us into peace and prosperity. Also, Lord in heaven, help us to know your love, because your love is what will help make the world a better place. If we understand that and we act on love, the world will be a better place and so will Lima, Ohio. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands standing, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Here.
Mr. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Lowe?
Here.
Mr. Tevin?
Here.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Glenn?
Here.
Mrs. Miles?
Here.
And Mr. Nixon?
Here. Under privilege of the floor this evening, we have Barbara Grisby regarding an incident with police. The police come forward and state your name and address for the record. Council rules allow for three minutes.
It's Barbara Kelly. Grisby is my maiden name, married name.
Okay. And your address?
733 West Elm Street, here in Lima.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, um, this was about three years ago. It was during the Fourth of July, they was out doing the fireworks. And the police had came to my yard and they asked for my cousin, asked him was he, you know, so-and-so. And he said, yeah. So, they snatched him up. So, I went down, came off my porch to go down to help get the kids and everything, 'cause they, you know, bunch of police and the kids crying and hollering. And as I proceeded to go down, I see them dragging my daughter, two police. So, I asked them what was wrong. I say, "That is my daughter." You know, I say, "What she do? What happened? What's wrong?" You know? And they proceeded to keep, you know, dragging her. And my son was standing next to me, which I never saw him, but I heard him asking them the same thing I was saying. And, um, so, next thing I know, they had tased him. So, he hit the ground. So, I reached down to help him and they grabbed me and handcuffed me. And I'm trying to explain to the police that I live here. I say, "I live here, I'm just trying to see what's going on, you got the wrong person," you know? And they just, you know, push me up against the car, hollering at me, you know? "You was under arrest and handcuffed me and put me in the car, took me to the police station." So, I did take it to court and there was two police, I don't know their names or whatever, whatever. But, they got up there on the witness stand, you know, I told my story to the judge. And they got up there and just, you know, lied on me and said that I came off my porch hollering and screaming, dragging, I mean, pulling, trying to pull my daughter from them. I never touched them. I never touched them whatsoever at all. So, they wanted to give me sixty, ninety days in jail, which I don't have no record at all, so they suspended that. But, they charged me an eight hundred and some dollar court fee that I don't feel like I should've paid. You know? And they just literally sit there and lied on me, because I never touched my daughter, you know, never caused her to get away from them or nothing, or nothing like that. So, I tried to explain to them and all the police, you know, they lied on me, so, this is what I got in the process of being lied on. So, I was just trying to ask what happened to my daughter, what's going on with her, you know? What if it was one of you all kids or something? You know, I think it would've been asking the same question. What's going on? Why is y'all dragging her like that? That's all I was asking. So, I didn't get no respect whatsoever at all. Got lied on and paying the eight hundred some dollars that I'm still paying. So, that's my story.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody gonna reimburse me any money?
Uh, the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that item A of the consent calendar be received, filed, and approved, and items B and C be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve item A and to receive and file item B and C. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Finance Director regarding the 2015 budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number one be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Finance Director regarding additional appropriations to the 2015 temporary appropriations.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number two be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Reinecke Ford Lincoln.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number three be received and filed. Legislation is on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number four receive and file. Legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the Director of Utilities regarding legislation to amend ordinance 5514.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I move that communication number five be received and filed.
Second. The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Auditor requesting legislation to enter into a contract with Harris ERP.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I moved that communication number six be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion?
We need legislation.
You want to amend your motion to authorize-
I want amended to authorize the, um, to the director to do the appropriate legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six and to authorize the law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Mayor regarding an opportunity to improve the civil service hiring process.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed and referred to the HR Committee.
Second.
Motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven and to refer it to the Human Resources Committee. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
Um, I was asked by Counselor to explain how this change would work. I'd like to take a few minutes to do that. Currently, as you know, we have a rule of ten, which works in the following way. Essentially, if we would have a, um, a test administered by the Civil Service Board and we would have a hundred individuals take that test and pass it, and we, at the same time, would have, say, four, five openings that we're trying to fill. The rule of ten allows us, as an administration, to interview and consider four or five, depending upon the number of openings, times ten, which is forty or fifty of those who passed the test. Instead of being in a position to actually consider everybody that passed the test. What that does and what the current, and it's always been this case, previously it was even more restrictive, it was three times the number of openings, which left the vast majority of people on that list never hearing from us beyond a letter that they had passed. So, after Mrs. Miles' comments at the last meeting, we talked about a number of ideas as administrative staff and wanted to come back to you this evening to ask that both the Civil Service Board and Council adopt a rule that would allow us to consider everybody that passed. This is not about dumbing down the test. The test would remain what it is. The test would, and if the passing score is seventy, the passing score remains seventy. It's instead an opening up of the opportunity for us to consider everybody that passes, not limiting it to the, um, the number, the smaller number that simply end up being first considered. I also want to emphasize that, um, there is frankly no private sector company that would conduct its hiring process the way the city does and has always. What we're trying to do is figure out the broadest possible opportunity for us to be able to hire the best possible talent for the city. And restricting it simply to a number of those who don't represent everybody that passes, but rather a much narrower number than that, means that a lot of people leave here, particularly in the, um, in the community at large, never hearing from us, creating a sense and rumor mill that says, "It's not worth my time to take the test, because I'll never get contacted." And instead, the system prevents us from talking to most of the people that pass. So, I'm asking that you adopt a rule that allows us to talk to, evaluate, consider everybody that passes the test.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lowe.
For those that are here and those that are at home, I am the Chairman of the HR The system that we currently have, it does work. It's not a matter of if it does or doesn't. It does work. The issue is getting the communication out to the people in the masses to let them know that the tests are available. If I asked any one of y'all to show me how many y'all knew there was tests on last week or the week before, I doubt if it'd be ten percent. That's what the issue is, the communications to the people in the masses to let them know that the test is being taken. We have been working on this diligently with the rule of ten, and one of the things that has been brought up was the process on getting people hired more expeditiously. People were waiting, they take the test, six, seven, eight, nine, sometimes a year later, just had this incident last year, where they had to wait and they was waiting. Well, they're not gonna wait too long, they're gonna move to the next city and they're gonna get that person. And they're gonna leave Lima. Now, what we're trying to do and what we're currently working on, the reason why I want this to go into committee, is 'cause we need to compare apples and oranges on some of the points that the Mayor has brought up and some of the points that the Counselor has, uh, excuse me, the Committee has brought up in the civil service. I'm telling you right now, civil service is not for this. There's a reason. Okay? We can sugarcoat whatever we want to sugarcoat, but we're not getting hired in the city. What brought this about, I believe, in my personal opinion, is when I asked for the numbers to come out. You got four hundred and ten individuals, part-time and full-time, and only twenty-six is, well, I should say of my color. And there was, I think, thirty-six, thirty-six or forty-six minorities total altogether. The number's still off. We're looking at six point seven percent. I also made the comment that it starts with the head. When you walk into this building, you don't see us. Okay? That's the issue. Now, we could do this pass or fail. I'm telling you from the heart it's a mess-up. Okay? Why are you pushing this now? You ain't pushed it in twenty years. And that's, that's, that's my thing. Please let us go through the process. If the Mayor is right, I will be a man to say he was right. I have no problem doing that. I just did it last week. I have no problem saying that. But, I'm telling you, Counselor, I'm asking you as fellow Counselor, let's put this in discussion, and what is wrong with talking about things? Why is there a rush?
Mr. President.
I just, excuse me, I just really believe that we need to talk about this a little bit further. More detail. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
I have no problem with Counsel giving it absolutely thorough discussion.
Thank you.
But, I do want to take exception. We have been working on this issue the entire time I've been in office, and we have not succeeded. In 2008, we issued a formal report with all the data that demonstrated conclusively that the, that the system wasn't working. So, this, this is about creating as much opportunity as possible for us to be able to address this issue in a very serious and systematic way. And I absolutely believe that a thorough discussion by the Civil Service Board and Counsel is essential to making certain that the right decision gets made. I have no problem with that at all.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
The reason why this has been proposed, and for those of you who were here last, last month, our last council meeting, is because I suggested that there be a committee developed to look into the hiring process and to change some things that were not working as the Mayor has mentioned. There has been efforts in this, in this city to recruit minorities, but the current process is not yielding what we want to achieve. So, the reason for this letter that the Mayor put forth is an attempt to try to address what I have asked him and the administration and ourselves to address. And it's a start, it's not, by no means, all that he's gonna do, I hope. So, I, I'm just saying, it's a start, as I asked and as the, the Counsel should be, you know, but I agree, it needs to go into committee, it needs to be discussed fully with the Civil Service Board, because if it is passed, they will be the ones that would have to implement it. So, it, it needs to be, to go into Counsel. Again, I just want to stress that this proposal is done at the request that I made at the last council meeting.
Mr. President. Is there anybody else that wants to-
Mr. President, I got a couple things.
Get others. Mr. McLean?
Yes. First of all, and Ms. Miles is absolutely right, and it's great that we can research this, look at it, 'cause I know a lot of folks need jobs right now. And I don't want to see continually our young folks leaving the city of Lima. And like Ms. Miles said, we could look at it, we gotta look at it and see what direction we're gonna take it. Because I've been on Counsel a long time, long time, and we've been, just continue trying to fix the civil service problem. You know, is it a problem? Some people probably say, "No, it's not a problem." You know? Sometime, I look at it sometimes, all the time, that see things that goes on, I talk to folks and stuff. But, any idea that we can put together, and if we come as a group, because we gotta try to fix it. This has got to be fixed. And I always use that state of emergency all the time. It is a state of emergency. We, if we give an idea, let's look at it, and let's come together collectively. You know, I appreciate what Ms. Miles had done to push this, because over the years, I have tried. And I tell folks, I think I failed, because we could never find a solution. I don't care, we give people money to go out and recruit people and stuff like that, we still seem like, but we have stories come back and tell us that, "I did this, I talked to a firefighter, said he passed the test," you know, in minority, you know? And some of this stuff that, you know, you can hear stories from everybody to tell you. But, let's come collectively and try to fix this problem. Because I want my kids to come home, stay here. Okay? This, the economy is good, you know, and housing is not expensive, what they paying for right now, everybody want to see their grandkids and kids get a job for the city. It's the best kept secret, besides working at the prison or working at Ford. Okay? But, I'm saying, this is the best kept secret, great retirement. So, we need to come together, let's look at this real good, you know, trying to make this happen, right? Because a lot of folks out there waiting to see, when they seeing this happen, like, wow, you know, excited about it, but, you know, Mr. Lowe say, the Chairman, he say, "We want to look at it, and we will look at this and see what we can do." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Anybody else? Mr. Lowe? I'm sorry. Mr. Lowe?
I want to say one, I want to say a couple more things. I was not the Chair of this Committee until this year, and this is my fifth year, I just completed my fifth year on Counsel. Sometimes you gotta sit back, you gotta took, take a look and see who's who and who's moving what, and why certain puzzle pieces are coming together. And now that I feel that I got a grasp, this past September, I really pushed for some of the changes with the civil service. I've worked diligently with the Civil Service Board, and they're on page with what I'm telling you this evening. We need to cut the time that we're taking. We do this pass or fail, say, "Oh, a hundred pass." That's a hundred interviews you gotta do. Who's waiting? People can't even buy a can of corn now. They need a job. They want to stay in Lima now. They want to stay here. We're trying to cut it to a point where we can interview just the minimum that's needed, so they can get to working and do with it. We're getting the best candidates. This isn't a minority issue, this isn't a Caucasian issue, this is, we want the best person issue, period. I wouldn't care if they was purple, orange, or yellow. We need the best person, please, fellow Counsel. We gonna talk about, we gonna talk about it. But, as the Chair, I'm telling you, tonight, I wouldn't pass this. We're gonna discuss it. Um, I urge you to call your Civil Service Board members and ask them why not. Call me, ask me why not. There's more to this. Last thing I want to say before anybody leaves tonight, I am so happy to see this room this evening. This is beautiful. Beautiful, being needed. If you're, if you're listening to me or you're hearing what I'm saying, we're gonna put it in committee, and just like you came out tonight, it needs to be out there. This is one thing, too, it's been mentioned that even with the firefighter test or the officer's test, the police officer's test, they're not even from Lima, white or black, they're coming into the city. We need to do a better job with communication when the tests are being given and taken, point-blank. The system that we have right now works, period. It works. We're tweaking it a little bit, but it works for the most part. If I told everyone of y'all had a hundred dollar bill for y'all, y'all make your way to come get that hundred dollar bill right now. Okay? Same thing with the job, if you really want it, you go get it. You go get it, get nosy, get on the computer, look it up. Okay? We've had other issues where, so that you would know outside of hiring and jobs, this docket that we got right here, we up here passing stuff, half of y'all ain't got a clue what we're saying and what we're passing. If it was on the website where you could see it and read it, you would know and hold all of us as Councilmen accountable. Okay? You got the weekend to look over it, talk to us on Monday morning, we come here and do what we need to do for you. Everything ain't meant to be known, or everything isn't wanting to be known. I'm telling you, let me do my job, we're gonna put it in committee, we're gonna talk about it, and we're gonna move forward.
Mr. McLean?
Mr. President, um, I kinda like to see a show of hands of anybody that was on the roundtable shareholders meetings back in oh-eight, nine, or ten. In this, in this whole building? One?
One.
Two? Two.
Me.
Three, four? Me, five. So, there's a lot of things that went on in this community back in those days, where we actually sat down and discussed what the most important part that we would like to see in this city. Okay? A lot of things came out of those meetings. A lot of information came out. But, you know, from, from this day forth, I as Counsel is just as guilty, and I'm starting my eighth year as Counsel, some of the stuff just don't happen. It just doesn't happen, period. One of them is the community police. That was one of the top ten that everybody wanted, and we haven't started anything toward it. Will we? Maybe. But, the Civil Service Board is not broke. It's there for a reason to protect and to help our administration hire the right amount of people with qualifications. Watering down a system is not there to help us. It's not gonna give us any better results if you don't come out and take the test. That's the problem. We need people walking in the door, taking the test. We have, I can tell you, Chief Martin, I can tell you, Chief Mark Hefner has done, he sent their employees out to try to help you train and get you to the position that you will take the test and pass it. They don't take it. What's wrong? We need your voice. We need to know what's wrong. Tell us, so we can fix it. The only way we can fix it is if your voices tell us where we have to turn next. Thank you.
Anybody else? I have a question, and I guess somewhat directed at the comment that you just made, Mr. McLean. The hiring authority in the city is telling us that there's a problem. And they aren't seeing enough, they aren't being given the opportunity to interview enough people. I don't think this letter says that they'll, in the scenario mentioned, guarantee an interview to a hundred people, there's ten positions. But, it certainly gives them an opportunity to look at a hundred people who are able to pass the test to hire from. I mean, there's lots of opinions about whether civil service is broke or not broke. But, the administration is the hiring authority, and they're saying that there's a problem. We've known there's been some problems, and here's something that they are saying would enhance their ability to hire, yet we don't want to hear it. So, I'm looking forward to it going to committee, and we'll have a discussion on it. I'll ask the clerk to make sure that we're all aware of when that committee meeting is, so that we can have a participation in that communication or in that, that committee meeting. Okay? So, Mr. McLean?
And, you know, I don't believe I spoke very in-depth about this at all. What I was talking about overall was trying to get the people to take the test. What is it that we're doing wrong that you, they won't come in and take the test? What is it? That's where I'm speaking. It's not giving them the ammunition to hire or to investigate or to interview whoever they want. I never said that. What I said was, what is our problem? Why can't we get them to come in and take the test? Did I say anything other than that from anyone out there? I don't think so.
Your comment was, "Tell us what's wrong." And I'm saying, the hiring authority is telling us one of the things they identify as wrong. Okay? That's all. Mr. Lowe?
If we spend less money in some areas and maybe advertise a little bit more, how many y'all knew there was a test within the last two weeks?
Awesome.
It's not as many as it should've been. Okay? Sheep draw sheep. So, if you tell one, you keep passing, you keep passing. That's what needs to happen. That's what needs to happen. And I, and I'm gonna be honest with you. Mr. Oger, I know without, without a doubt, because my church announces it. When, when the jobs come up, our church secretary announces it. That's all she can do. I don't know how many churches out there or different communities, organizations is announcing this and putting this out. I know ours does, I know he does send it out. Okay? I'm just gonna say it. I'm so tired of us complaining, thus ain't moving. It's time to move. But, the system we have now does work. We just need individuals that truly want the job, who truly want to get out there and see if you can get the job. Who want to take the test, pass the test. And don't be talking about, "Well, my mama took it in nineteen-" And don't be talking about, well, my mama took it in 1972, and she didn't get nowhere, and the same for me. That's, that's what I hear all the time. So, I, I'm just asking, it's time for us to get busy and, and put yourself in the position to make the change. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lo. Motion on the floor is to receive and file communication number seven, refer it to the Human Resources Committee. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Communication number eight.
From downtown Lima regarding continued financing of your organization for 2015.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo?
I move that communication number eight be received and filed.
Second. The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number eight.
Oh, Henry.
Finance Committee.
Oh, sorry, I can refer to the Finance Committee.
Second. The motion on the second is to receive and file communication number eight, refer it to sit, to the city's finance committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the auditor regarding the statement attesting to reasonableness of revenue estimates.
Mr. President.
Mr. Tevin.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed.
Second.
Motion on the second is to receive and file communication number nine, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries, ordinance 29714.
Uh, this is a second reading authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Clemens, Nelson, and Associates.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles.
I move that ordinance 29714 be passed on the second reading.
Second.
The motion on the second is to pass ordinance 29714 on its second reading, is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Lo?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
No.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes. Ordinance 29714 does not have the two-thirds required to pass on its second reading, and it will be placed on third reading. Ordinance 29814?
Amending ordinance 7014, this is also a second reading.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Miles?
I move that ordinance number 298-14 be passed on this second reading.
Second.
The motion on the second is to pass ordinance 29814 on its second reading, is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Lo?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
No.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 29814 has a five to three vote, does not have the necessary two-thirds affirmative to pass, and it will be placed on third reading. Ordinance 30414?
Uh, this is also a second reading vacating a portion of Boyer Street.
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance 30414 be passed on its second reading.
Second.
The motion on the second is to pass ordinance 30414 on its second reading, is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo?
Uh, again, for those of you that don't know what this communication is pertaining to, uh, the gas station on Philly Road 81, uh, they're looking to expand. Uh, I have talked to some of the residents in that area. While I understand, we've had some lengthy discussion earlier this evening, uh, they do have the right to sell what they want to sell, but, uh, I vote the way the residents asked me to vote. It's not considered paraphernalia because there's no residue in it, but the glass pipes, the blunt leaves, the hookah pipes, this, that, and the other that's sold in there, a lot of the residents feel if they have more space, uh, they'll bring in more items. Uh, and they just simply do not want it no more in their neighborhood. So therefore, when I vote tonight, uh, while I, while I'm fine with business growth, uh, what they're selling, I have an issue with, and I don't want to see anymore. Our kids go into these stores, they see these items, it attracts them, they make them all kind of little fruity colors, this, that, and the other. Uh, I just, it's just the wrong thing to do, it's the wrong thing to sell, and I don't want to look at it no more. So for that reasoning, uh, I will be voting no on this, this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lo. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean?
Um, in our audience tonight is Mike Finn, he's the representative for this project, and, um, uh, he gave us some news earlier tonight that, um, this store is going to be changed over to Marathon, and Marathon's, um, prohibits them selling that paraphernalia. So, uh, I know it's a, a thought process now, and, and none of us here on council likes to see those items out there for sale in front of kids, but as a whole, this is a business that we have to promote, and I think this business, if, if it becomes that Marathon station and changes its ways, let's support it, wholeheartedly. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Mr. Gordon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too was contacted, this is not my ward, but I was contacted by some people, uh, who did a poll in the ward, and for no other reason than, um, supporting the, the people that elect us, I, I'm not gonna be able to support this vacation of Boyer Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Glenn?
Yes, we had brought up, uh, during our city council, we met, when we were meeting back there, we had talked about how we had to deal with all these drug paraphernalia going inside these stores, you know, and, uh, and I always look at it, we had a lot of them in the south end of Lima, and five or six years ago, I fought this, that why our kids gotta continue seeing, displaying, uh, how you have sex, what you can buy for sex, what you get smoked with and all that, and our kids have displayed this, get to see this all the time. And I'm hoping that, right now, we got a large audience, we should fight in our neighborhood and stop this, because if our kids get caught with this, they gonna get, they gonna get charged with paraphernalia, that's resolution inside of it, and I mean, and it, we got to stop, but we gotta come together as a community, you know, you just can't, Derek Glenn can stop that, because I know I had a lot of folks beat me up about it, saying, why are you going against him on that? But when your kid get caught with drugs and stuff, then it's another story, but we need to stop these things from going in our community. Yes, business, don't get me wrong, it makes a lot of money, it's their business, and I understand, I'm always for bringing business to, to the city of Lima, but we gonna sell ourselves to hurt our kids in displaying this, don't, we can't, we don't have no control of it, no we don't. They saying we don't have no control to tell them what they sell in their stores and, you know, all that. But the deal is though, but our kids are getting introduced to this, and they not gonna stop, so we come together and stop them. We need to stop them, guys, because this, this, it's getting very, very terrible, you go in these stores, and these, these babies going in to get some pot for their mom, or doing some, some parents can't go all the way out to Walmart's and go get their stuff, they had to come to these little, these store that we have in our area, and it's bad, it's terrible. I don't want my, my grandkids looking at none of that stuff, you know? I don't think we should, they disrespecting us, because they don't care, because they think we don't care. So we gonna step up and stop them from doing this, I'm telling you, we need to step up no matter what. It's a price tag, you're not gonna make money off of us and disrespect our kids, and I've been saying this for a long time. You know, I love my folks in my ward, and, and no matter who they are, we gonna, we need to stop it, you know? If we, if we put a stop to some of this, for this slowdown, the war on drugs, it could be, you know? But when a kid come back, right, leaving, leaving school and stuff, going in there seeing that, and they buying it, they allowed to buy it, you know? I brought that back here to city council, but we need to come together and stop it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Any further discussion? Um, I'm gonna state that I am gonna support the vacation of Boyer Street, a portion of Boyer Street, uh, for the following reasons, and I, and I understand and I agree with the concerns about, um, types of products that are sold in not just that store, but other stores, but there are limits to what we can do legislatively. I believe that, uh, if we want to limit those types of products from being sold, it's something we have to deal with separately. To stand in the way of vacating a portion of Boyer Street and the expansion of the business solely based on those reasons, I believe is a slippery slope. I think that, while I agree with some of the examples cited, you know, what's next? Do we stop supporting expansion of gas stations because gasoline can be used by the wrong people for arson? Do we stop businesses who legally sell alcohol because it can be abused? And their intent when they sell it is not that it be abused, they abide by the law, they sell it for legal purposes, it is legal, but it can be abused for drunk driving or other reasons. I think that we get ourselves as legislators into a really slippery slope, making decisions based on a product line, one or another, that is sold in a store. What I like or detest might be completely different than anybody in this room, and we might have a hard time coming up with a decision among us of what's the most detestable item? What's the most favorable item? Because we all have different opinions. But under the law, it is legal for the items that they're selling. If we want to change that law, that's an issue that we have to deal with separately. I'm looking at this from a short term and a long term. Short term, we have a business that wants to expand across Boyer, from their current site across Boyer onto a vacant site. Long term, it creates a larger parcel, should that business, you know, on, on both parcels of land right now, you have one business operating and one that closed. It was a bank or a credit union of some sort, okay? Now granted, in my view, it'd be beautiful if the credit union had expanded and bought the gas station, this wouldn't be that big of an issue. So happens the credit union closed, the gas station wants to expand, it may or may not remain that gas station, or that brand of gas station, or even a gas station at all, but there will be a larger parcel that will be more marketable to a business, and it will give a piece of land in that area to provide for the economy, provide jobs. And that's where I see this, um, as being needed to be passed tonight, and I'm hopeful that it will pass tonight. Counting heads, I'm not sure if we're gonna get six votes or not, but I would ask the three that have stated, uh, to consider this on the merits of economic development, business development, and the vacation of that street. And let's pass this, and let's get the business moving forward. We've heard that they're gonna be coming a different brand which doesn't allow these types of things that are under question to be sold under their franchise name, okay? We've been given opportunities and suggestions on how to meet with the business owners, air the concerns, and ask them to be responsible to the community and not sell those types of things. I say we get it, get the street vacated and get the business moving forward and deal with those issues as they come. And you know what? If they don't want to listen and they want to continue to sell that stuff, don't shop there. Don't shop there. Don't buy gas there, don't buy pop, don't buy cigarettes, don't buy beer, don't buy anything. Go down the street. Tell them you're not happy with your dollars. Right now, I think we need to approve this ordinance and allow the business to expand. So, I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
No.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
No.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 30414 has five affirmative votes, it requires two-thirds affirmative, it needs a sixth vote, it will go on second reading. Third reading, I'm sorry, that was already on second reading, it'll go on third reading. Ordinance 115.
Amending the 2015 temporary budget.
Mr. President?
Mr. Tevin?
I move that ordinance 115 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion on the second is to pass ordinance 115 on its first reading, is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
No.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 115 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to one vote. Ordinance 215?
Loving special assessments for property maintenance charges on premises in the city of Lima.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn?
I move that 215 be passed after your round.
I'm not gonna read it.
I moved that ordinance, I'm sorry, I moved that ordinance 215 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion on the second is to pass ordinance 215 on its first reading, is there any discussion? Mr. Lo?
I would ask for Mr. Odom to come forward, please, if she will. This, this is not to prolong any more time than what we have this evening, but will you please explain to some that are here this evening that may not have heard it, the importance of this getting paid and what this document has to do with?
Councilmen and persons here tonight, these assessments are basically placement of unpaid property maintenance taxes, or excuse me, unpaid property maintenance assessments that are placed on property taxes. If you do not pay us when you receive your notice of bill, it will go on your property taxes. If it does not, um, get paid, um, it, when it's placed on your taxes, there still is an expectation that you must pay them, you have to pay them along with your taxes, they are not held separately. Um, there is a new system that now, um, these are placed twice a year, so they're going on more rapidly. Um, we, you pass them every month, excuse me, but the auditor will place them twice a year. They stay with the property, meaning that they will not be removed until, uh, even if they can be passed on to the next owner. So, um, the bottom line is you, all of you, are paying for other people's lawn mowing, trash cutting, board up, if that's the statement you want me to make, Mr. Lo, it's the one I make every time. We are all paying for those persons who do not keep their property up, we are paying for people who are damaging your property values, and so we encourage those who receive these bills to pay them, and, um, if you happen to live next to properties where people are not complying, we ask you to be a good neighbor and encourage them to do so. Is that what you wanted to hear, Mr. Lo?
Absolutely.
Okay, we got it.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 215 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 315?
Amending ordinance 12714.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 3 days 15 be passed on its first reading.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 315 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. Ordinance 415?
Amending ordinance 5514.
Mr. President?
Mr. McLean?
I move that ordinance number 4-15 be passed on its first reading. Second.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 415 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 415 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. ordinance 415.
Amending ordinance 12714.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 3-15 be passed on its first reading. Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 5-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 5-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. ordinance 5-15.
permitting the mayor to enter into a contract with Reinicki Ford Lincoln of Lima for the purchase of two vehicles.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 5-15 be passed on its first reading.
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 415 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 415 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. ordinance 5-15.
authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Reinicki Ford Lincoln of Lima for the purchase of two vehicles.
Mr. President?
Ms. Adams?
I move that ordinance 5-15 be passed on its first reading.
Second?
The motion, the second, is to pass ordinance 5-15 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Low?
Yes.
Mr. Tevin?
Yes.
Ms. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Glenn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miles?
Yes.
And Mr. Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 5-15 has been passed on its first reading by an eight to zero vote. miscellaneous business, Mr. Gordon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank everybody over the last week and a half or so that we've had some good discussions on working on the issues with police and community relations and working together for peace. I want to thank the mayor for his time that he spent with me, the chief that he's, his time that he spent, Mr. Tevin and I spoke to Pastor Moffett, Pastor Warren, Pastor Jones. We've been, the issue hasn't fallen on deaf ears for anybody that's listening or that's here because of that concern, you know, and my suggestion is that the first place we look is prayer and look up at the sky because, you know, peace is what God wants and I think that's where we need to start. And with that, the only thing I have to say is be good to each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, I want to emphasize that I like to see this crowd that's here tonight. You guys are very important to us, you know? We sit up here and say yeses or nos all the time, but your input to us is very important. So, you know, if you have questions, please call us. I mean, I'll give you a phone number. Just come up and see me, I'll give you a business card. Call me. You know, my whole idea is education. If you know what you're voting on, and that's sometimes when it's kind of hard to get a packet on a Friday afternoon, and on Monday you have to come in here and vote yes or no on stuff. And it's very important that we have background and meetings to make sure that when I do get that packet, I know what I'm voting yes or no on. So I really appreciate all of you that came out tonight. I think it's wonderful and I'm glad that every one of you had a safe and a happy new year. So thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean, Mr. Low.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I really truly feel that every councilman that is up here this evening truly cares about the ward and we answer calls all the time and by doing what I'm going to do, I want to hold us a little more accountable for what we do as far as helping to get the word out about what city business is. So at this moment, I would like to make a motion that the council docket be placed online at five, before 5:00 PM prior to the next council meeting.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Well, I just wanted to tell you before he continues with his motion that Gary Worst and I are working on that. That has to come from data processing and we are working on doing that.
Okay. I want clarification. 5:00 PM, when?
Friday.
Friday? Okay, you didn't specify a day. Friday?
The Friday, 5:00 PM, Friday, Friday council meeting. That way, that gives the residents of City of Lima time to look over, they have any questions, they can call us and if we don't have the answer, we do our best to get it before we get to council meeting that night because I, you know, the more minds thinking on the subject, the better. And I think that we should be voting. Like I understood our council president's point this morning about business, but guess what? The residents put me here, they don't want it, and that's how I had to vote. Okay? So again, the motion's on the floor.
Second. The motion, the second, is to have the council docket put on the city website by Friday, 5:00 PM prior to the council meeting. I don't have a problem with that. It's actually something that I've been working with Sally to try to get done for the past couple of months, but getting the size of the document up on the website has presented some issues, but we've been working on that. So those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Low. Mr. Tevin?
A couple of things this evening. The finance committee will begin the review of the budget at our budget meetings beginning next Monday, January 12th at 5:00 PM, Tuesday, January 13th at 5:00 PM, and Wednesday, January 14th at 5:00 PM, with January 20th, Tuesday, scheduled if needed. In the past few years, we've been able to complete the budget process in three meetings and if we do find and if it needs to carry over, we'll continue the meetings. Mr. Gordon brought up an issue that he and I did have conversation on and we met with members of the Black Ministerial Association to discuss concerns that they had. Independent of each other, Mr. Gordon and I had both met with, Mr. Gordon met with the mayor and I met with the mayor and the police chief, and that was in advance of any discussions with the Black Ministerial Association representatives. And the concern that both of us had, and I personally am watching what occurred with the rally in the square in the last week or so, and the way it was reported or misreported, the issue concerned me to the point that I look at what's going on in our country, you know, nationwide, and I'm concerned that there are agitators outside of our community that would love to come in and stir our community up. We have some agitators inside our community that would love to do that. But I think that we, as council and the administration, the police chief, and all elected officials can work on this and take the initiative. And I think that we can make some changes that will be tangible and positive for our community, and that's what I want to see happen. I heard Mr. Low has referenced everyone up here represents a people in their wards. Well, we also represent the entire city on citywide issues and we need to engage and provide that leadership. The issue that I brought up to the police chief and the mayor is the issue of, the way it was phrased in the editorial today, which just was by coincidence, it said pinpoint policing versus community-oriented policing. And really, it's not a question of either or. To me, it's a question of pinpoint policing, which is, I think, an important tool that our community has used effectively, but I think that there needs to be a balance of neighborhood policing. And with the budget constraints that we have faced over the last number of years, we have not, we have, I don't want to say we've taken steps backward, but those positions that were federally funded have gone away. And those police officers have been pulled back into the number of police officers that it takes to man the police department. And the police chief faces budget constraints like every other department head in the city. But to me, this is an issue, it's like the old Fram commercial, pay me now or pay me a whole lot later. And I think it's time we make an investment in our community. And I have asked the police chief and the mayor that, we have the mayor's estimate, which is a base estimate, and I have asked that when the police chief comes forward, which will be on Monday night, that he include an option that will give he and his department the flexibility to enhance the efforts that we have in community-oriented policing or neighborhood policing. And I think that those dollars that we spend for whatever number he comes to us with is going to be money well spent because if we don't, and I, again, I'll back up to what's happening across the world and in our nation today. If I close my eyes and it's summer of 2015 and it's 105 degrees outside and we have an incident and we've been sitting on our hands as community leaders, shame on us. So this is our opportunity to engage in a proactive manner and provide the resources and the community dialogue. I expect and I would hope that for this discussion, this room is full, as full as it is tonight or fuller, with people providing input on how might we move forward together. And that is what it's going to take. I know our city has competent and capable individuals. I fully support the Lima Police Department and their efforts. I fully understand what I was told by the Black Ministerial Association, and what I said to them was, if I look at, if I just absorb all this, I don't know when I hear complaints whether 90% of it is true or 10% of it is true. But to me, it doesn't make any difference. If it's 10% or it's 5%, let's go work on that because we can always get better. And I think that the police chief believes that, I think the mayor believes that, and I think that we can make impactful changes. So it will hopefully start a dialogue in the finance committee meetings and the budget review that will help move the community forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tevin. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to request Gary Shealy, taking an opportunity to speak to him earlier. We had spoke on this issue prior to the holidays, the recyclable bins. I had held off asking at that time because there were some issues and I've got residents wanting to possibly go to the larger ones and like to get a status, basically.
We are working on a survey to get out. It does take, working basically up in the water bill basically to get that done. We've had some surveys, it's been going on, but our intention is to move forward, I'll say in the next 30 days, so we'll have it out.
All right. Thank you. And if I could, Mr. President, Ms. Odom, I had left her a message earlier. I'm sure other councilors in their wards and through the city and those attending tonight can attest to the gas company and their contractors in our neighborhoods and the tear-up of our streets and now of our sidewalks. I've got a lot of residents that no longer have a sidewalk. It's been with gravel for the winter months, it's too cold to pour concrete, and my issue and some concerns from the residents are, we don't want to be fined that we didn't shovel our walks and we don't have a walk. And I was hoping to get it with Ms. Odom, to hope that the inspectors have been out and maybe made a list of the addresses that have been affected by the gas company and their contractors so that when the snow is covering everything, we're not wasting our energy, our resources by sending out a notice, you failed to shovel, and come to find they didn't have a sidewalk to begin with. So I don't know if Ms. Odom has anything to add to that or if the inspectors?
Ms. Adams?
Yeah.
Mr. Geiger, correct me if I'm wrong, but we passed legislation and it seems to me that that should cover such instances in the from time to time circumstances.
Mr. Nixon, we did pass legislation. I can't remember specifically what it said. My top of the head response, though, is that legislation does not cover this type of circumstance.
Okay. Good. Then I'm going to authorize the legislation to make it happen because that is not right that we would enforce. So hopefully we won't be in the situation, but if by some reason we errantly cite somebody who doesn't have a sidewalk due to this construction, I like the legislation in place to address it.
Would you like me to prepare the legislation the way that I wanted council to do it the last time I came?
Yes, I would.
Yeah, yeah, please.
I can do that.
Hi, Mr. President, I appreciate that. I just wanted to flag it to Ms. Odom, you know, that hopefully the inspectors will make a note, you know, of these homes. And there's quite a few, at least in the fifth ward, and I've driven around six with others. It's massive on some streets. And I don't want to see the inspectors waste their time in write-ups and then have to go through the appeal process and everything else, you know, just a lose-lose for everybody aggravation. So I just wanted to, hopefully we'll have not five inches tomorrow and...
It's always good to hope against hope.
Right. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Mr. Glenn?
Yes, I've got a couple of things here. Mr. President, I just want to, you had brought up about the businesses. No, I'm not against businesses. When you got 25% from 18 to 19 go to prison for drugs and with them introduced to drugs in different stores and everything like that, that's what just started coming about at a young age, when they started getting introduced to it. Yes, we might say it might come from their home, but when display going on like that, you know, this is a problem should have been fixed before this problem came up, for these businesses came up. This was talked about already, it wasn't fixed. So I don't want to make people think that, oh, you know, we losing businesses in the city of Lima, Councilman Glenn did not support this because of that. No, I'm looking at the issues about drugs in my ward and the kids and the young folks and adults that introduced the drugs. And this plays a role in it. This plays a role in it. Now, we can fix everything else. We can put legislation on everything else. We did put legislation on this problem that we have here and it was brought up and we like to push things through and paint a different picture on it, but I think, I'm looking out for the folks, young people that go into prison, parents on drugs, parents on LSD, parents on heroin, okay? These are some of the things because 5, 20, 15% being introduced. You ask a kid, you interview a kid, say, how do you start, when you start smoking your first joint, where you got it from? One would say from a family member, two would say I was introduced to it, three would say, oh, they sold in there anyway, you know? And these are some of the things we got to look at. If we love our city like everybody say they love, if we want to reunite our city like everybody want to do it, we need to try to fix these problems before they come up. Let's get on it. Let's all work together. You know, I agree with Tom, I agree with Jesse, I agree with the president of city council. Yes, we want to keep businesses here. We don't want to be a city that's saying that we tough on businesses, but we got to look out for our folks, too. This is our future, folks. When I see young kids going in there, being introduced to drugs, we got to come together and fix it, just like we fixed that legislation just a few minutes ago. Fixed it, didn't we? Why didn't we fix that like that? See? But that's something we got to look into, that's something that we got to put our mind to, that thing is important because this, because this on the other side of town, it's on my, in my ward, you know, in my area or in other areas, it's not going to hit the Okay? We got a survey in this city. It's called Lima Matter Survey. Ms. Odom said we already got 320. Okay? You can go on the website. We got till February 22nd. What they doing is doing our five-year plan for our city. So please, please, let's get this done. We got till February 22nd, Lima Matter Survey. When you get, you can download it at www.cithall.limaohio.us. And you can do that. Or, you know, we can get a, we can get a piece, we can get a paper. You can come up and get a paper. No, but we're going to try to push to all our neighborhoods to take care of this because this is very, very important. Also, I'm going to look at the cadet program again, revisit the cadet program again. I'll come with some new ideas with that program. With the cadet program, that I know a lot of you guys remember it, back in the days we had a cadet program in Lima and was a part of trying to get more minorities involved in the police officer. It was proposed a couple of years ago or this past year, and we didn't have, we didn't have the money for it. But I'm looking at other resources because I think it's so important that we do get that program in there. So we can try to work on it, getting minorities and police officers. And that's one thing we've been tweaking, we've been trying to work on and, and trying to find what direction we need to take it. So I'm just looking at that too. Also, the mediation program that we had came out for, we'll be going to training for that next week down to Dayton to get that going. I think that'd be great to have that program in the city of Lima. I'm pushing all the faces, a six-week training we have to go through. So we, I will be going down there trying to get all that tweaked. So I'm hoping for that. I appreciate all the calls that coming in from my father. Thank you guys so much for all the prayers. We, we had some, Ms. Adams brought up the sidewalks. There are some problems, you know, and, and I know people calling me saying they messed up their sidewalk. I just fixed my sidewalk last year. They come out, put a little piece in there. I've been dealing with the engineer on this, calling the engineer about it. You know, there's, there's a lot of different things going on there. So I'm hoping that we get that taken care of because some people does not have sidewalks and they don't have they snow shovel and will be a problem there. And I appreciate the neighborhood associations and the board there, all working together. They are trying to put together executive board, which I'm very happy on and trying to get in the community and know what's going on. I appreciate all you guys are here. And we should have a big crowd here every night so we can know what's going on here, what's the things going on in City Council. This is a very, very important, important place to be at on Monday night because a lot of things, a lot of things going on and a lot of people don't even know. But it feels so good to see people here tonight and they're here to hear what we do as a City Council, what we do as a body here. And that's what, that was so good about that. And I want, I want to say in the beginning of the year, this is our first City Council for the first of the year. I'm praying and hope that we all can work together and find solutions that we can BS one. You know, you know, I know you guys went talked to the Ministers Alliance and we're going to be talking to the NWC, all of us. Let's come together and try to work together. This is a great city to live in, very, very great city to live in. Economy is good, cost of living is good. Let's come together and try to fix some of these problems. Let's don't carry this, this problem, these problems over and over and over to the next year and we didn't fix it. There's a lot of things I had to carry over to the next year. But let's don't do that, continue doing that. This whole body here can come together. You know, we got different things going on. We've got contracts going out, you know? I want people to know about that, you know? Get to know about the contracts we got going on in the city. Let's get involved and do things for the city. Let's come together, that's one. You know, you know, I don't have a problem with you pointing fingers at me, you don't like me, that ain't no problem. You know? But we're here to serve the people of this great city. Let's try to, let's work hard to serve them. Could we fix these problems overnight? No, we can't fix them overnight, but we can come together. People see us come together and work together. Me and Ms. Adams communicate together. Me and Ms. Miles communicate together. And then they can say, we got hope that things going to work together. We're going to fix these problems. It's, we're going to stop pointing fingers at the police department, point fingers there. Let's come together and sit down and come together and try to work together and fix that problem, the police department. And fix the problem there. Hiring, we got to do that too. We got to come together and put that together too. But we got to fix, we got to work on the best thing for the peoples of Lima, you know? Not the best thing that I create, but I'm going, well, because I want to see, again, I said it before I started, I want to see folks here stay here. We can't lose no more people. I don't want to see that. But we got to come together here and we can't be divided, you know? Because he don't like the way that went. Also, I want to thank Amy Department. We got the house down on Nine Street. Thank you guys so much. So many folks were so happy about that. I thank Gary Shealy Department. I know the garbage company had a little bit of problem there, but we're going to give them a chance, we're going to give them some time to work out the bugs. We've been having a lot of, a lot of garbage cans will get broken. I've been all over the city dealing with that, you know? And people been calling about that. But let's, let's give them some time, guys. You know, we, we had to give all the new garbage companies time to get the bugs out. So we're going to make sure of that. But I want to thank that, that house went down on Nine. Been there a high source for a while and we appreciate Amy, you guys got that done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glenn. Mrs. Miles?
Mrs. Miles. Mrs. Miles, are you awake? You probably must be, but I got to get talking.
I'm just getting Gary a hard time.
Oh, y'all woke up like, ah, he talking.
First, I want to say Happy New Year to everybody. You know, it's, it's so good to, to be able to see a new year. And I, I am really anticipating greater things for Lima. I mean, I just, that's just me. And, and so with that spirit here, with everyone that's here tonight here, you know, when you come to our, to the media, let's, let's come with being supportive. Let's come with having facts already known. I, I really want to tell us if we want to have progress, if we want to make changes, we have to do our work and find out what the issue is. And we need facts, not just what Mrs. Jones said or what Sally said. We truly need to understand what's going on because if we have the facts, we will be able to make a greater impact in making a change if we know exactly, you know, the situation, the circumstances and those type of things. So I really want us to truly, truly be focused for the year to, to anticipate Lima truly not being living in middle America, but living in mighty abundance, you know? I mean, we, we've got to have that mindset. We, we've got to start with ourselves thinking that there are greater things that can happen in our community. And I also want to thank the mayor and his administration for at least making an attempt to, to, to start the dialogue with trying to find out what do we need to do to make changes to our current hiring process. We have all pretty much agreed that, that we're not getting the results. We're not saying the process is broken. We're saying that we're not getting the results that we, that we would like to have. The 7% that we currently have, I truly myself as an individual would like to see 10%, but again, it will come, it will come with time. Mayor has mentioned that he and his administration will roll out some of their anticipated changes or plans by first quarter. And I will be anticipating those changes. And I've also included some things that I would like to see. And I would like to invite each, all of our councilors and even those in the audience, if you have any suggestions, if you have any ideas that you would like to be considered to, to make them known, you know, write them down, you know? Contact information for each of the councilors is on the website. So if you have any suggestions, we welcome input from the community. In order for this to work and in order for it to be effective, we have to have information from all areas to be considered. So if you have any comments, if you have any, any change you'd like to see, you know, not saying that they will be made, but they, you know, at least we'd like to hear what, what they are. So I'm, I'm praying that for this year here, that, that we will have a vision for this city, that we will do things differently, that we will not continue to have the same issues that we have year after year after year. And, and there's no changes. We just carry them from one year to another. I, I, I am sitting here, you know, saying that we will no longer have a lot of the issues that we've had in the past, that we will be so focused this year as, as City Councilors, as the administration, as our mayor, that we will truly take some of these issues that have been occurring and truly get serious about them and make changes here. So we need to write this vision for our city. We need to let everyone know what this vision is. In order for us to be unified, we all have to be working toward the same goal. So write the vision. We need to let it be known to everyone. And then we as a group will all come together and that we, since we know what the vision is, we will help make it happen. And so that, that is, that is what I'm, I'm sitting here on January 5th, you know, and we'll see how things is on December 31st and see how much we have, you know, adhered to that vision that we know, that we have proclaimed what it is, what we want to accomplish. And we're not going to be able to accomplish everything. I mean, but we need to hit those things that are truly, truly important to our community. I'm not just saying the black community. When I say our community, I'm talking about our community as a whole. Because we need each other and we need to be able to work together. We need to be able to help each other. And so we just need to have that vision for our city and we need to be positive. We need to be positive.
Right.
And stay focused. And I want to thank Councilor Tevin and Gordon for going forth too, again, in that same spirit, trying to understand what the issues are, trying to, you know, to identify and to let those who are coming to us and saying, this is an issue that we not just act like it doesn't happen or we haven't heard or let it fall on deaf ears. Again, not every situation that is brought to our attention, we will be able to address. But there are some that we probably can at least look into. And so we just need to give our people hope that, that the things that they're talking about, the changes that they want to make, that, that maybe some of them can, can happen, you know? We really need to be, be working hard to make sure that some of these things that we can, as a, as a, as a council and as administration, that we can make happen. As we look at the situation in Ferguson and all over, all over the country, we have to be cognitive that these things could very easily happen here. And if we keep hearing all of these things that people are saying that are not right and, and that they need to be changed, and we keep saying we can't do it because of resources, we can't do it because of money, that sooner or later it's going to come to a head and there's going to be some serious issues. So I'm asking us as councilors and as administration that we've got to be proactive in some of these areas. I mean, I think if you were to look at the Ferguson situation, I bet that was not the start of issues. I bet if someone did a study on that, I bet there's been numerous issues that have come up in that community. And, and the issue with that shooting of that individual was just, you know, that they swallowed, broke the cameras back and that takes, that takes me back a long time. So I, I just want to, want us to be really concerned about some of the longstanding issues, some of the requests that have been made, and let us not act like we don't hear them. You know? You know, we, we need to try to work together to make some of these things happen because we, we need to move past zero and into greater things for our community. Because we live in a great community. We have great people here. And I know everyone wants the best for themselves, for their families, but it's going to take work, it's going to take dedication, it's going to take a commitment. And the only thing I'm asking, again, that we act on facts, that we not act on emotions. Emotions can get us in trouble. We need to have the facts when we do things. And, and, and let's do things with decency and order. Decency and order will get us a lot further than things being chaotic and, and out of control and, and not doing things the way it should. So as I plead from my heart for our city and for each of us, and if, you know, I'm glad to see the audience here, but again, don't just come and hear. You know, let us, let us be doers. Let us do some things. Let us, let us talk to each other and say, hey, you know, what is it that we can do as a community that we can start working on? And, and again, we need your input.
That's right.
We need to know some of the things. Again, we cannot fix everything.
That's right.
But we can be focused on certain things that we can make a difference and we can, we can, we can go places in Lima. We can be, we can be greater than any community around here.
That's right.
And I believe that for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. In light of what Councilor Miles has said, how many people in the audience have been at a council meeting on a regular basis over the last six months? Just show of hands.
Faithful three there.
So for the, the rest of you, okay? We talk about having honest dialogue. It was alluded to regarding the rally that took place in the square a couple of weeks ago on the 18th about the reporting. Now, you've all been here at this meeting. You've all heard the conversation. See if the headlines accurately reflect the meeting tomorrow. Because as those three gentlemen who I know have been at meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting, and us know, many times we wake up the next morning, we read the paper and we're like, the headline is nowhere near what took place. Just as the headline on Monday, the 19th of December was nowhere near reflective of what took place on Sunday afternoon. So when we talk about honest dialogue, truth and understanding of each other and what we have said, we have to be honest. And I'm going to be very truthful with you. If you didn't hear it said by me or anybody here, if it doesn't sound right when you read it, call us. Okay? Watch the replay because it was probably said differently. Media doesn't like complete sentences. Okay? They like sound bites and they like to edit what you say down to something that generates headlines and sells papers and gets people to listen and people to watch. Okay? Now, again, as Councilor Tevin mentioned, there are agitators. Go read the blogs. Better yet, keep your blood pressure down and don't read the blog because by the time you figure it out, the ones that are very, very incendiary, you know, don't live here, aren't here tonight. And pardon my French, there's no way in hell they will be part of the solution. Because solutions don't fit their vitriol.
That's right.
Okay?
That's right.
So, you know, I am going to say this, is this city perfect? Are our relations with everybody perfect? But I've got brothers and sisters in my family that I don't have perfect relationships Perfection is a great goal rarely attained. So we're going to make mistakes and we're going to say something to each other and you're going to say, what did you really mean? And we're going to have a conversation about it. But y'all won't get it in the news. Too much detail. Okay? As, as I was listening to the miscellaneous business and going back to the dialogue that we had over the closing of Boyer Street or the vacating of a, a section of it, there was a lot of discussion pre-council, a lot of discussion out here about limiting of typical drug paraphernalia devices. Okay? Devices that are sold innocuously but can very easily and are largely recognized as potential to become drug paraphernalia. Nobody has referred that issue to committee, even though it was discussed in some form several years ago. I want to refer that issue back to the Community and Economic Development Committee and to the Law Director for review and just perhaps a revisit to what limitations we have or what we can do to limit typical drug paraphernalia items from retail sales.
Second.
Now, the motion is second under discussion. I'm going to say that, again, personally, I think it's a slippery slope because you get into a lot of things. But perhaps there are laws out there, perhaps there are ways that we can address it legislatively, fairly, and, and without emotion, in a very objective way, that can perhaps limit some of these items from being sold. So I'd like to, I'm referring that and that's where I hope that it goes. It may come back that we simply can't do it legally. Fine, it's worth having that discussion again. So all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Happy New Year. I don't have anything further.
Mr. President, I move that Lima City Council adjourn until January 26th at 7:00 PM in these chambers.
Second. The motion is second, is that Lima City Council will adjourn until 7:00 PM on January 26th in these chambers. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.